Sounds like they might have a contract that actually wants to do a good job. I like that when you sent out his letter.
His letter.
Oh, yeah, that's our engineer. That's how we think. I'm excited to get the stuff.
Mm-hmm.
I'm really excited for it to be able to see that. Chip and seal down at Sunrun.
All right, well, if I can get everybody's attention, we're going to get started here pretty quick. And we're going to get started right now. So before we call the meeting to order, I'd like to invite Jill Kirkwood, Seventh Day Adventist Church, to give our invocation. Is Jill here? Okay. Just a minute, please.
Dear Emily, Father, we're so thankful for the opportunity to work on some city business tonight. And, Lord, we know that you are an awesome God and that you love us all so much. And this city is a part of your plan. And, Lord, we pray that you'll be with the plans that are made tonight, well, decisions that are made. And thank you for your spirit that rests in this town and rests with these people. And thank you for everybody that came. And, Lord, thank you for the privilege of prayer and the awesome results that we get as we pray. I would put all this in your hands tonight, Father, and I just pray that you help us to make the right decisions in Jesus' precious name and prayer. Amen.
Thank you. If you'll remain standing, we've asked tonight, we have gotten volunteer fire department color guards who will present the colors. And after that, we'll have a moment of silence and explain the rest of the settlement. I will turn the floor over to you.
Where are our guard? Our guard, Paul? Our guard, present, color? Our guard, cover?
Okay, before we do the Pledge of Allegiance, I'd like you to join me in a moment of silence for Jason Smith, Valco Volunteer Firefighter, who was recently killed in the line of duty, and also for Frosty Osborne from Hooker. Frosty was a policeman in Goodwood, he was in Hooker, I mean. He was an EMS, EMT volunteer. He was the fire chief, and he went back to an EMT volunteer till his passing. And he's had a tremendous effect with most of our first responders in the county. So if you'd join me for a moment of silent prayer. Gentlemen, would you lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance?
I would lead us to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic from which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you all. Thank you, gentlemen, for taking the time out of your busy day. All right. I'll call this meeting to order. Agenda item number two is attendance roll call.
Peterson.
Here.
Swager.
Here.
Alvedres.
Present.
Setzer.
Present.
Sanchez.
Aye.
Hoffman. Mr. Petty.
Here.
Mr. Shannon.
Here.
All right, agenda item number three is, let me get my phone turned off. Somebody called. Okay. Agenda item three is a presentation of a proclamation that declare the week of May 8th through May 14th. It's Lois Boston. Give you a little update or a little background on that. If you didn't, if you don't know Lois, you've missed a joy in your life. Let me tell you. Lois is a resident out at the Dunaway Manor, over on the Manor side. And I found out about the fact that Lois turned, today's Lois is birthday. Lois is 109 years old. As far as we can find out, she's the oldest resident or citizen of the state of Oklahoma. So we already presented, I already went out and presented her proclamation. So let me read this so you'll know what we did. It's not very long, so bear with me. Whereas Lois Wallen was born May 10th of 1913, and was number nine of 12 children. And whereas she graduated from Goodwill High School and Panhandle A&amp;M College in Goodwill, Oklahoma, where she met and married Charlie Boston on December 24th of 1936. They own Boston Furniture and Gaimin, Oklahoma, and were married for 70 years until his passing in 2006. Whereas Lois taught school in May and felt Oklahoma and played golf until she was 83 years old. And she didn't just play, she competed. She was out to beat you anytime she was on the golf. Whereas Lois is a mother, grandmother, and great-grandmother, and is a longtime faithful member of the Victory Memorial United Methodist Church. And whereas of her birthday, she's 190 years old and officially the oldest known woman in Oklahoma. Now therefore, I, Kim Peterson, Mayor of Gaimin, Oklahoma, and City Council, hereby present this proclamation in honor of Lois Boston, May 8th through 14th of 2022. So we already gave that to her and a framed copy, and family was there. And also another thing, and I've contacted the Alumni Office at Panhandle State, but she's also being the oldest graduate of Panhandle State University, leads itself to some type of credence, and I think they're going to do something special for her on that. So with that, I will turn it, we'll go to agenda item number four. And I'm going to ask Mr. Alvedres to present this proclamation to Dr. Manny Barius.
Item number four, I have a proclamation here. And I'm going to read it out, then I'm going to ask Dr. Barius to come up afterwards, or if you would like to come up right now, or you and your wife. Right now is fine. Or if you just want to take it, if I can read it and then you come up. Whereas volunteer community service is an integral part of the operation and spirit of the city of Gaimin. Whereas we honor those who generously give their time and talents to improve their community. And whereas Dr. Manny Barius, a committed citizen to the city of Gaimin, has given his time to start a youth leadership program, The Transformers. And whereas Dr. Barius served as Chief of Staff of the Memorial Hospital of Texas County and was interim CEO from May 2019 until February 2020 in a volunteer capacity. And whereas Dr. Barius has raised over $25,000 to bring a kids' cycling and safety program to Gaimin Public Schools, and also working with the city of Gaimin to create bike paths and alleys to encourage cycling in the community. And whereas Dr. Barius believes in the value of healthy lifestyles and achieving positive health outcomes. And whereas Dr. Barius, as an individual, believes in the power of service and community and ensures that he makes a positive contribution. And whereas Dr. Barius was voted Gaimin's Person of the Decade in 2020. And now therefore, as city, the Gaimin, City of Gaimin, City Council of Gaimin, given under the hand and seal of the mayor and the city council on this day, 10th day of May 2022, I proclaim, thank you, Dr. Barius. Thank you.
Look at the camera, Sergeant. Look at the camera. Smile pretty. Thank you.
Do I?
Agenda item number five is approval of the consent agenda.
Make a motion whether you approve the consent agenda.
Second.
Have a motion in a second.
Setzer.
Aye.
Sanchez.
Aye.
Swager.
Aye.
Alvedres.
Aye.
Peterson.
Aye.
We have five ayes.
Agenda item number six is discussion and possible action to approve an engineering contract with Park Hill Engineering for the Gaimin Chip Seal 2022 Project for $38,500 and authorizing Park Hill to advertise for bids. I'll turn that over to Mr. Shannon and Tocol.
Okay, I've, I want to do a kind of a tag team. We have Martin Hernandez here this evening. He's head of the Street Department, but it's time the city of Gaimin starts working on their streets again. It's summertime. We've hired the engineering firm of Park Hill Engineering Group. They've been associated with the city of Gaimin for quite a few years now, I understand. I've done it just a little bit different this year. We've evaluated all the streets, and these are the streets that, there's a map. I think she'll be pulling the map up, it's toward the back, of the ones that we'd like to do. What you're going to see there is some streets we're going to redo. I think last summer, there was Sunset was done. And I'll just be honest with you, and I'm pretty well black and white. It just wasn't really done to good standards. So we're going to be taking a little bit of extra care, starting out right. You see, a little up to the top to the right is the Seaboard Plant. I don't know how many thousands of vehicles come in out of that plant a day, but there's thousands of that, that I've watched that road almost deteriorate to the point of reconstruction. That needs it immediately. If we could, if we could start tomorrow, it'd be done tomorrow. But we need to get a hold of that, seal it up, where there's no water penetration down into the base. You'll see it come all the way down to 24th Street and all the way to Sunset. Now, talking with Don Sled, the County Commissioner, District Two, I think. He and I have met, because there's always been talk about they own half, we own the other half, but it's still inside the city limits and still inside Texas County, in fact. And he and I have been working together really well. They're going to be doing the portion from East Street to Hurleyman Road. Because that was already on their plan to do, so he didn't want to bother our plan. I said, well, go ahead, just go ahead and do it. So anyway, they're going to be doing that. So, and they're going to be doing, that's all the streets they're going to be doing in Gaimin. We'll be doing the rest of what's blacked out. Down Sunset, all the way down to the, right at the golf course. And that's a redo. I hate to do it, but it's got to be done. It's just got to be done. Also, in East Street, from, I think that's from, what is that, Third or Fourth Street? Fourth Street, I think it is, all the way north. Anyway, it's just streets that the Street Department deemed necessary for it to get done, right, Martin?
Yes.
Okay. A lot of this information that we're getting out and we're developing, you'll probably be getting a five-year plan this next month, but we're using the study that was performed and done, thankfully, by IBTS. They left great information in Wave Streets, and we're utilizing that. There's no sense of hiring an engineering company to do that extensive study. We're going to take that money and start doing some chip and seal. Let's talk about chip and seal. Chip and seal, it's not a Band-Aid, but it's close to a Band-Aid. Now, it's not going to be a super smooth like the top of this. What chip and seal does is preserve what we have. And right now, money is tight, oil is expensive, rock is hard to come by. And so it's our recommendation to go ahead and start this chip and seal, preserve what we have, try to build up some funds where we can do some total restoration of our streets. Now, I don't want the public to say, well, they'll get on Sunset. It's going to be a lot smoother than it was, but it's not going to be as smooth as glass as you expect it to be. But it will be sealed, and hopefully, we can protect the integrity of the base. It'll be a lot better than what it was. So we're asking tonight to hire the City Engineering Group and also start advertising for bids. That is what we have for you this evening. I'd be tempted to answer any questions of a doctor. If I can't answer them, I'm sure Mr. Hernandez can.
I know last year, we started putting money aside for equipment, street equipment. Is this going to come out of that budget?
That is going to come out of that budget. Right now, it's my opinion that the type of equipment that is authorized or was in the budget, it's equipment that you just can't use once a year, then forget about it. It takes an individual years. And Mr. Hernandez, being in the construction business almost always life, a distributor truck, something simple as spraying oil is not just as simple as spraying oil. You need somebody that sprays oil six, five days a week. So it's, and the spreader rock and the equipment that was budgeted out. I love my employees, but they have other responsibilities. If you don't run that piece of equipment five days, six days a week, you lose the finesse in it, and you do a really poor job instantly. And with the price of rock, the price of oil today, it's, you really don't want to be making any mistakes.
So moving forward, it's not the city's plan to buy this gear, equipment, teach?
That's what I'm, yeah, that's what I'm recommending.
And I think it's on the same subject, so that's why, that's why I was asking, so.
It is, and it's a good question.
I think we were going to allot roughly 500K a year to gear. Martin, you were on that board, right?
Yes, yes, sir.
Okay. So this is all going to be redirected to chip and seal? We're not going to try to take it down to the, you know, take a couple streets down to the base? You know how we talked about? And reconstruct a couple roads? Is that not the case anymore?
No, because we have to have the right equipment and the manpower to do that. I mean, there is no way we can come up with manpower right now, kind of short on help. Everybody that applies, they don't have the equipment experience or anything like that.
So you mentioned not full Band-Aid, right? But protecting the integrity of the base of your, of the foundation? So what's the timeframe in getting proper?
Chip and seal normally will extend the life of a road bed anywhere from two to four years. Hopefully, by then asphalt prices, because Sergio will be right honest with you. You total reconstruct something down to the base, nine times out of 10, you're going to have to do the base prep too. And with the cost of asphalt, a year and a half ago was about 90, 95, 92 to the $95 a ton. And that's not laid, that's just coming right out of the plant. You add another $15, $20 a ton onto that. The cost of asphalt today at an airport project, and when, not Winoka, but Watauga, I think it was up to about $160 a ton, just because of asphalt, oil, rock, and everything. It just went unbelievable. So I'm going to put an educated guess, if we took the 500,000, and I'm saying 700,000, and did a total reconstruction, might, would get a couple of blocks done. And that's just my educated guess.
Understood.
Any other questions or questions?
So by doing this, this is just a short-term?
Sure.
So what, on our long-term, are we still going to consider buying the machinery to do?
I'd recommend not to. And because of, I mean, you've got a, your lay-down machine's going to cost you anywhere. I've seen where it was a budget, and I all disagree with the budget and numbers. But your asphalt lay-down machine probably may be $700,000 to $900,000. And it's hard to just set one of those, do three or four blocks a year, just let it set. And I'm sure a guy could lease it out or whatever, but it's hard to let that expensive equipment just set. And it takes special individuals. I mean, we're talking individuals that are experienced in asphalt and that type of lay-down machine. You're talking people making anywhere from $28, $40 an hour, your lay-down guys.
So do we have a plan? Are we thinking about a plan for the end-of-the-road road? Or how are we going to replace those roads whenever they're no longer to consult?
Well, that's part of the five-year plan. We're going to have to initiate some type of total reconstruction, because there are roads, side roads, some of your artery streets that are in need of total reconstruction. I think Mr. Hernandez would agree to that.
How far are we into that equipment purchase process?
We haven't.
We have about anything that we?
Any other questions or discussion? Do we have a motion?
I'll make a motion there. We approve the engineering contract with Park Hill Engineering, the Chip Seal Project in 2022 in amount of $38,500 and authorizing Park Hill to advertise for bids.
Second that.
Have a motion in a second.
Sanchez.
Aye.
Alvedres.
Nay.
Swager.
Aye.
Setzer.
Aye.
Peterson.
I want to vote aye with reservations.
We've got four ayes and one nay.
Okay. Agenda item number seven is discussion and possible action to declare three vehicles in the Community Development, IT, and Street Departments as surplus. There's a list attached. Mr. Shannon.
To my understanding, we sold quite a little bit of vehicles about, what, six, eight, 10 months ago. I just feel like these were omitted. We found three more that are ready to go. Paul even shaking his head, yes, I'm going to. Fortunately, where the market is right now, I think you're going to see, it's going to surprise us all the amount that's going to be given, but I mean, they're all, they're used, very well used.
What are we going to, are we going to use Purple Wave, or are we going to go local?
I think we have Purple Wave account already set up, and it'll just go there.
Okay.
Do I have a motion to declare these items surplus?
I'll make a motion to declare the three vehicles in the Community Development, IT, and Street Department as surplus.
Second.
Have a motion in a second.
Sanchez.
Aye.
Setzer.
Aye.
Alvedres.
Aye.
Swager.
Aye.
Peterson.
Aye.
We've got five ayes.
Agenda item number eight is discussion and possible action to accept the resignation of Kyle Hawkins on the Planning and Zoning Commission and Board of Adjustments. There's letters attached, Mr. Shannon, and I think his letter's very self-explanatory. So do I have a motion to accept his resignation?
Make a motion to accept the resignation of Kyle Hawkins on the Planning and Zoning Commission, Board of Adjustments, item eight.
Second.
Have a motion in a second.
Sanchez.
Aye.
Alvedres.
Aye.
Setzer.
Aye.
Swager.
Aye.
Peterson.
Aye.
We've got five ayes.
Agenda item number nine is discussion and possible action to appoint two applicants to fill vacancies left by Tia McCallum and Kyle Hawkins on the Planning and Zoning Commission and Board of Adjustments for unexpired terms ending December of 2023. Attached, we have three individuals that have made, filed an application with intent that they'd like to be on that board. They're all three here. So in just a little bit, I'm going to ask them, want them to come up, give us about two minutes of what their qualifications are, why they want to do it, et cetera, and so forth. I'm going to paraphrase them, but we've done a lot of, there's been a lot of visits about this. There's been some, anyway. The, those two boards, we have ordinances that are very specific as to how we fill those boards. I think that there's been some errors made on the previous administration and some of their staff that they didn't really come to the council like they should have. So I want to remind everybody, these are board appointments. They're not, they're not elections, they're not popularity contests. They're appointments that are made by this board up here. And there's some peoples on our boards and commissions serve at the leisure of the five of us. So our job is to vet out those people and make the best decision that we have in our mind as to who's qualified to fill those positions. So we're not going to have a lot of public comments and discussion about this, because this is the business of these five people up here to make those appointments. Is that not correct, Mr. Petty? So at this time, I'm going to ask Mr. Redcorn, Sanchez listed first, to come up to the podium and give us a couple of minutes of life and time, so she'll be ready.
Good evening. Unaware of how to apply for the Planning and Zoning Board, I was instructed back in September of last year to fill out an application.
Is your microphone on?
Did I push the button?
Is it green?
The thing's green.
Yeah. Just talking to function.
Good evening. Is this better?
Yes.
Excellent. In September of 2021, I went to the Board of Authority and Planning and Zoning Board and submitted an application. I was then brought to the board again at the next meeting, where Paul Montgomery, the Chair of the Board, along with Kyle Hawkins, Chet Oblander, and Jason Eggers all approved for me to be on the board. I was then informed that I just had to have it presented to the City Council and that there was a budget issue going on in October of last year. And so I was going to be tabled twice. But it was reassured to me that I was going to be presented and such and such. I actually went and have served on this board and have been to a MAP workshop and also to a variance meeting that was called back in September 7th, I believe. I serve on lots of boards throughout this community. I am very active within my community. I am a licensed real estate agent. I deal with planning and zoning, and people coming to my, to me, to my business every day, asking how they can start a business in this community, or their public dwelling themselves. I research a lot on variances and how to better plan our city. I think I would serve as a great representative for the Planning and Zoning Board of Authority. I like to keep people in my community informed through Facebook or one-on-one through emails. I feel like I've answered lots of questions, helped representing the city with people having concerns of their own zoning, mainly through helping them navigate our awesome website. Anything legality-wise, of course, I would suggest to talk to the city attorney. Do you guys have any questions for me?
Okay, thank you. So we'll go to Mr. Singletary and we'll give you a couple of minutes to bring us up to speak with Todd Singletary.
Good evening, all. My name is Todd Singletary. I've been a part of this community for going on 49 years. And yes, I was two years old when I moved here. No, not at all. Been here for a long time and I've been a, a public accountant for 35 years in this community. I see a lot of businesses, a lot of ways to do things and way not to do things. And so I have experience certainly with businesses. Been part of our community, been part of the cemetery board for the last, I'm not sure exactly how long. And recently, I was kinda ready to start looking for another opportunity to support our community. So when I heard that my friend Kyle was resigning, I put in my application for this board. And I look forward to the opportunity if council so is inclined to have the opportunity to be more involved in a real way with the future of our community and the opportunities that we have to grow as a community. Very grateful for this opportunity. Thank you all.
Thank you. And Mr. Timothy Yinx, I know him as Tim, but we'll use the long version of his name today.
I think I know all but two faces that I'm looking at on a personal level. And I'd just say that I'm happy to volunteer my services for this responsibility. And as far as previous experience, as I like to say, in a former life, I was a county agent in the state of Indiana where it's required by law that the ag agent serve on the plan commission. And in those experiences, two things that I would tell you that were above the normal call of most county agents. One, we approved a, a planning and zoning document in the county of Putnam County, Greencastle, Indiana. And then in Decatur County, Greensburg, Indiana, we actually rewrote the zoning ordinance so that the agriculture district would actually fit agriculture practices rather than what I always said was the all-else category. But my wife and I reside on 21st Street and we're very proud of the upkeep of the streets and sidewalks and, and the neighborly manner that we all coexist with each other. And if appointed to serve on the committee, I would simply follow the document and, and, and vote what the document reads. So there are no questions? I'll thank you.
Thank you. Well, according to our Board of Adjustments and also the Zoning Commission, our variance board, but they were created on Article 7, Section 1 of Guyman's Zoning Ordinance, Number 334. Board composition is a five-member board appointed for three-year terms by the mayor and confirmed by the council. Vacancies are filled by the mayor's appointment and the council's confirmation for an unexpired term. Regular meetings are held the fourth Wednesday of each month or as needed by special call. We have about four people. Trust me, it's not been a, this is, anytime you sit down and decide who needs to be on board or who ought to be on a board, it's a challenging experience. I had quite a bit of input from calls from the public, residents, a few personal visits. I don't know about the rest of you, but that is a shape part of my decision. So it's my, my job as mayor to make a recommendation and then you gentlemen can, and ladies can decide if you wanna act on that or confirm it. My recommendation would be Tim Yinx and Todd Singletary. My motion to?
Mayor, I have a question.
Okay.
So the, the appointment, there was, I mean, if you look at, back at the minutes, there, there was an appointment by the Planning and Zoning Commission. And there was some rulings that even though there was no appointment by City Council, is, is there any liability there?
I'm gonna have to refer, refer to Mr. Pedd on that.
Is there any liability on decisions made by somebody that was not appointed by council but appointed by Planning and Zoning Commission to be on that board?
No, the only, the only event I'm aware of is that Ms. Redcorn cast a ballot at one planning commission meeting and it was part of the majority. Had she not voted at all, had she not been there, the action of the commission would have been the same. Short answer is no, there's no.
Thank you.
I'll make a motion that we go with the mayor's recommendation of Mr. Singletary and Ms. Yinx.
You just, you just?
Nay. I apologize.
The fact of the matter is, if we make these, we accept these recommendations, we're undermining the commission.
The board, yeah.
The commission. Chair already made a selection. And we have a member that's already voted as that selected member. Why would we go and undermine the work of a commission as a board, as a, as a council just because we can?
She doesn't remember. I'm gonna defer again to Mr. Pedd for the ask. Well, I think you read through.
Right.
I mean, it's, it's the mayor's vote.
Right.
And would, you know.
Right.
I guess, I guess.
But were you in the meeting when they selected Ms. Redcorn?
Let's back it up. So, so we've, over the, since I've been on the commission, my first, before starting the council. Boards, boards do not make an election. They don't, they, they used, we always got a list of possible candidates for, we had people made applications from the public. Nowhere, I don't think there's anywhere, many of our boards and commissions give that board authority to appoint anybody to the board that comes to us. And it never happened to me, specifically, for a whole series of events. And.
But who are we punishing?
I'm not punishing anyone.
Right.
I'm making, I'm making.
Hundred percent, I understand. I understand.
Well, my decision.
But the chair made a recommendation that it would be Ms. Redcorn. And for some reason, that didn't get in front of us. And so here we are, how many months later? And we're undermining the decision of the commission?
I think we need to probably clarify.
I understand the legalities.
No, the commission doesn't.
Right. I'm talking about recommendations.
Our boards can make a recommendation.
Right.
But it was proposed somehow that it was a vote, to vote and vote for that. It wasn't a recommendation. It was, the wording's a little different. I can't explain why, why drug out. There's a whole lot of things on it. I don't think this is one of those things that, firstly, I've made my, I've made my recommendation and the folks can act on it however they want. We have a motion.
You could say we, we could be at fault for that too because we're supposed to read minutes from the other commissions and boards, so.
But also, Sergio, we just recently, with Mr. Shannon stepping up and we've, we have been very, generally, we get the minutes of the previous session, we'll get the agenda for the next one.
Right.
So we haven't been getting our minutes in time and fashion. And I think that's been incorrect. Is that not correct, Mike?
Well, oh, yes, yes. We're doing our best to get the minutes out till you guys.
Right. There was some procrastination issues.
Again, I think it's wasted resources. We've already sent Ms. Redcorn to how many?
We've been to ICSC, representing the city of Guyan and I've been to zoning map workshop. This actually wasn't an issue until the Saddle Ridge Platte came up for vote. I voted on other things, but now it's a big issue.
Counselor, could?
Can I, the city did not send her?
No, I voted my own accord and I got to represent with the city.
Right. But still, just wasted knowledge, wasted resources. Kind of before in the past.
Well, I mean, there's, it's a three-year term and.
It was actually to complete the term till 2023.
There you go. So it, it's not a, I mean, it's, it's not that long to file again.
No, I was trying to uphold the integrity of the commissions. There's a reason why we sent them up.
Understood.
I've sat as a chair for several commissions now.
Understood.
I would be very disappointed if somebody had told me who I'm gonna be working with for the next three years instead of, you know, going through the process.
But it's still an appointment by the mayor.
Yeah.
I'm just, you know, you just, you just stated that, you know.
And I'm gonna address, Joshua, I wanna address one thing. Just because as perceived, the actions were legal or illegal doesn't necessarily make.
Yeah, I'm not arguing that at all.
And we operate, we have to operate, we don't take the minutes, go operate under the laws.
Hundred percent, hundred percent. This is a little interesting that you have a problem with it now.
I'm not, you said I have a problem?
Well, whenever I came up for vote, whenever the Saddle Ridge Platte came up for vote, it was just presented that I wasn't actually on the board. Unlike other map workshops I went to and other variance issues that were brought that I got to vote on, it was the Saddle Ridge Platte map that it was then brought to everyone's attention that I was not actually on the board.
See, that's a problem that it should've been brought to us back in September.
Absolutely.
And it wasn't.
Or October, or November, or December.
Had I known that I needed to contact the mayor, I probably could've contacted the mayor. In previous boards as Arts of Humanities that I have served on, I was applied at the Arts of Humanities Board, accepted by the Arts of Humanities Board, and then accepted by the council at a council meeting that I didn't even attend. And I'm here tonight.
Yeah. I mean, but you were appointed by the council for that other board.
I was, I was.
So.
But I guess the shortest weakness of it is we were, it was through our staff. It was never, wherever, whatever, it never made it to this council or to a council.
Do you not respect your council and the boards that Josh has suggested?
I, I respect, I respect those. I'm not gonna argue anymore. The statement is there are specific ordinances, statutes that guide and direct everything we do.
I'm sorry, I don't fit your agenda.
No, it's not my agenda.
No, it's your agenda.
These are rules that are in effect.
I mean, usually it's first come, first served. And she was the first one in line. I would like to know or at least have an explanation of why you didn't choose her over the other two.
Because I, I don't know that, that I'm not gonna give you a total, that means I did due diligence as I do with everybody. I have talked, I have, and I have constituents call me and then my, I listen to them because that's just what I do. And I'm not gonna go into a burden of discord or reason why or why not.
I'm sorry that you never contacted me. Did you contact the other two that you appointed?
Those gentlemen contacted me through other people and then we've had other discussions. This isn't a, he says, we says, we're not, we're not.
Right. It's, somebody, somebody's gonna lose. I mean, regardless, there's two positions, there's three candidates.
I have a motion in a second.
Setzer?
Nay.
Sanchez?
Nay.
Swager?
Aye.
Alvedras?
Aye.
Peterson?
Aye.
We have three ayes and two nays.
No, I thank you, Mrs. Redcorn, for your.
All right, it's gonna carry on. It's gotta be over.
For what you've been. I hope you will apply again whenever there's gonna be an opening or vacancy. I can guarantee you, we are getting the processes in-house back where there's pressure. Also, I wanna thank you for your service on our other, on our team members. Agenda item number 10 is possible executive session, discuss including evaluation, enter the city manager pursuant to 25 Oklahoma statute, 2011, section 307B, one.
I'll make a motion that we go into executive session.
Second.
Do I have a motion in a second?
Alvedras?
Aye.
Sanchez?
Aye.
Setzer?
Aye.
Swager?
Aye.
Peterson?
Aye.
Got five ayes.
David?
I'm. I don't know. 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 I don't know.[1709.63]
Yeah, unfortunately, I turned my mic too high. It's, it gives feedback on what I did for time. So I, the first thing I had to worry about is, because it has to somehow, it can't be a strategy, a strategy. They need to be nice as well. Yeah, because they need, what they need is a little help. Like the hook right here on their, on their cloud. Yeah, like from their eyes, you know, Kim doesn't talk into the mic, so they have to find Sergio's or... And some carry more than others. That's a patient too. Some, some voices care to more than others. Well, there's some that don't. But if you put a mic in front of them and a mic in front of like somebody, one you'll get super feedback from, the other you won't. And so it's tough with different voices. Yeah.
Because, now I can pick you up on, as far as, because I...
Oh, yeah. It's, yeah. I've tried to tell.
Thank you for the advice.
She needs it.
Can we visit afterward?
Yeah.
Thank you.
Okay. No, I did short last week. Yeah. Yeah.
I want to kind of...
Out there. For the buyer's... Other buyer.
Yeah, I hear it from the youngies.
Interesting. Something. This is a... The West. These are, these are... Yeah, yes. She's so... She...
I think it's open because I think it's, I think it's hard to...
Yeah. Boy, you can always... So I got another...
Is that all that you have? So, she doesn't know.
I can see this all. I don't want to share. Now, we can all listen. Well, she started doing that.
Yeah.
Really, she's... Yeah. And sometimes, sometimes they get lost. It doesn't go anywhere. But this is... Has it been used since the last one? Yes. Yeah. I don't know. You know, it's... Jesus is...
She's...
So it's... You're a...
I know that you're like...
Well, while we...
I'm really, I'm really, I'm very, I'm very...
It's a, it's a... It's not, it's not... There should be a little... So, all around. And that's... So I... She's...
I know I drank a meal. That she was...
Well, I was...
But anyway, she was... She said that.
She tried to... Soon as, as soon as it comes back. It's crazy. I have a card on...
She's... She doesn't...
That played right along. Two. I really believe that I can thank you. For a long time, we had a... Guy... She's starting.
She should...
So there's not... I always, I always... It's amazing.
What I like. But she's like, she's... But... She likes my...
Yeah. I want to...
Okay, so it's... Oh, she's... Actually, you're... Oh, okay. It was kind of...
The reason I...
That...
I guess it's... Trauma. Yeah. Oh. Yes. It's a... It's a... For... Yes. That's for...
It's...
Right. And that's... And that's... Yeah. It's... I love, I love it.
Wow. Wow. Well, I want to... Can you just give us my...
We're watching.
I mean... Yeah. My... Yeah, that's...
I'm like that, though.
Oh, my heart. You are here.
Where do you go? You walk in... Yeah.
Those are both things. Because we just...
Yeah. Charlie, I get it. Charlie. I didn't call you.
Who knows? Yeah. I don't know.
You know, that was...
You see the... No, I... So, this is scary, huh? I just... So, we're... I don't know. But, um, I think it's... I want to... Do you know? So... I don't know. It's... You said... It's... And so... I want to... Just... I don't know. So, I... So, I'm trying to... I'm... I chose this one. I... I'm... I'm... One... We... Exactly. I want to cut this... So, the... It's kind of... Just... Yeah. Okay. Well... And, uh, I'm also...
Sure, I'm going to carry it.
So... I can... I'm... I want... So... Um, I don't know. So... Yeah. Oh, I... I'm... I'm... This is... I'm... 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 I think I'm... So, I'm... So, I'm... Yeah. Which was... I mean, China is... But she chose the... How you say? Well, um... I'm... Yeah. Yeah.
So, there's... And... Yes.
Mom said she's... She's... Yeah. And... She likes his words. I don't know. Mom said she's... She was... She's... She's a little... She's... So, I look... Stay... And all of them.
Where's she? And you can say it's...
But we... Are you... The... My... And... Which one of them? So, is that...
It's...
And... Yeah. Okay. Six... So, you... So, I really...
She's... So... She works...
It's...
And it's... Then you go, you go... So, now we work. It's...
But I'm...
Well, I already...
That's what I'm... So... Anything. What... So... Yeah.
I'll, I'll have to... Say something. Yeah. See that?
I'm six. First. So... And then we... We have... Last. So...
Yeah. Where I'm at. There's a... You go...
This is... Yeah. So... So...
See? That's... Sorry. It's... And I remember. Could you answer?
Yeah.
I would...
Yeah.
See? So...
And... So...
She... Yeah.
How...
She... She... It's a...
And we're talking. She's like... So... But, um, I was just... And... The... I was... It's... But, um, I'm... 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 So...
Yeah. And so it's...
But...
Yeah. To... Or... Yeah.
It's... Mm-hmm. The... So... I don't know. Last... And... And I guess... So...
And then I can understand that or... She understands that.
I am. Sometimes I wear my hair. That. I. Her life. She's.
Yes.
Yeah. We have to go. We have to go. Station. Right.
Yes.
I'm sorry. I should just.
So.
I like. If there is. It was just really hard. This. That's. So much. You know, we do. And we always. I look at just. I have to. Kevin needs a lot of. But his mom's. Jacob is kind. The others. She said.
We was. Didn't bring the ones to parade.
I don't know. George. She was.
What do you want?
She's a good car.
Yes.
She's. She's. This car. Yeah. Yeah. Well, I act, but I know.
My wife was very curious.
Because it was pretty much. She's. So I'm just saying. I tell children. If you want. Starting. But I didn't. Oh. And then I guess. I. It's not. But it's not. It's not. I think. And this always works. What do we get to read? I just heard.
No, I don't want to.
If they learn a word. You want something done? You want to give them? She's going to get. My mom. Other which.
My wife did. She's taking two sequels pictures. Okay.
Show me that.
They go. They go off. There. She's asked.
It was kind of.
Weird. Weird ladies. Yeah.
What do you mean? Tyler, she went to college.
She got there.
Why? She can't. Don't. She says.
Well, you did some.
She didn't want to stop.
The Bible that was. Sorry. Yeah. Oh.
Well, I play the best. No, it was. So. Come on. I wish.
Yeah.
I can make. You can do. Do it next day. I see. I don't want to call you. Start over again. I got something. I got a comeback. Second time.
I should. I was. Especially for something. She was. And he just.
The language.
It's time. We're starting. We'll catch up. Thank you.
Okay. I was telling myself.
I used to. So. It was. It's a lot. Yeah. So you get a body thing? Yeah. I'm the only one that was having.
I do. Some of the. I don't like the. I mean. I'm.
It's. It's.
So. Sunset. Sunset.
Still very.
Sunset. Thank you.
So.
But I actually. How was it? I tried. Yeah. When I was in jail.
I mean. Your sugar nose bro. Or what?
Talk to them. Hi. Hello. Beautiful.
I can. Special.
I saw. Where?
That. That.
I will be. No. No. We're telling those projects. I'm. 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 That's. I don't know. She was talking about. She said. You know. There was some. She's. Yes. Ten minutes.
Ten minutes. Thank you. Appreciate it. Have a good day. Good day. I want to. Please let me. I mean, this is enough. I thought this was.
Let me say.
I know. They could be.
We were that one. It was like eight thirty.
You should order supper.
Yeah. The moment.
You should order supper. You should order supper.
You should. Mars, why you order a pizza? How long?
No. Or put her coffee. Or out of the. I shouldn't say it out loud. Out of community development. Out of community development. You can pull that. Buy pizza.
As long as you sign for it.
Yeah. Long as someone else pays it. Don't get it out of my budget. Because I'm running here and there already. No. To fix potholes. No. Because actually, you know the Proline? That I buy? It's a hundred and seventy six twenty a ton. And now. It used to be a hundred and fifty delivered. Now it's a hundred and seventy six twenty.
How many blocks?
Huh? Huh? Uh, one box gets twenty four tons. Oh, no, no. I don't know. Probably not even a half a block. Yeah, no. No, it's not very much.
Good. Bring. His power.
You want. You want.
Yes. Short time.
She's.
Call. She's.
A little bit of time. So. They spread. Yeah.
Yeah, the problem. But you might not.
I make a motion that we resume city council meeting.
Second.
Motion second.
Set sir. Alvedres.
Aye.
Sanchez.
Aye.
Swager.
Okay. Gen item. Let any action drive from your discussions.
I'd like to make a motion that we approve. The.
Amendments.
Amendment to. The city manager's contract.
Second.
Motion is second.
Set sir.
Aye.
Sanchez.
Aye.
Swager.
Aye.
Moving on. Gen item number twelve is reports from committees. Council members. Or city manager. Mr. Shannon.
I've got a couple of little things. Uh. Where Carrie go? This come out of your convention tourism. Some neat little. Grocers that's going around. I thought she might have. Uh. It's always good. It's always good to advertise. So. I want to talk about the airport project coming up. Uh. This is a project that was pushed off a year ago. It should have never been pushed off, in my opinion. But we're, we're. We've got the contractor and the engineering company. Have got us a start date of July the fourth. After the July the fourth. Uh, total reconstruction of the runway out there. About a six million dollar project. Uh, I'm going to probably issue a notice to proceed pretty quick. Because they're doing the stall tactics that asphalt companies tend to do. When they underbid a project. So we need to push them. We, and they've got eighty five days to do it. Uh, the company that's got the bid is Ellsworth. Uh, out of Tulsa, Oklahoma. Great, great company to work with. I've known Bob for many years. Uh, so they can get the whole thing done for me in less than thirty five days. We need, we need to push them. So I'll probably be issuing a notice to proceed. This week. Swimpool going to be opening it May twenty seventh. We've had a little scare. I don't see George here. We start. It'd be ready to go today, but we lost about a foot of water the other day. And that's always scary on those. We took. Unfortunately, we had to fill it up twice. We thought we had it fixed first time. Didn't fix it. We finally found it over the weekend. And when I'm saying over the weekend. We had four or five guys working through the parade. And, and Sunday. And they found the problem. They fixed it. Sunday. And they started filling it last night. And, and we're holding more. So my dad just put this on the radar. That's when the pool was built in nineteen sixty three. That's as old as my wife. And she's kind of old.
You're on camera.
You know this is recorded, right? You never record this.
She wasn't very much. So anyway, so that's something just, just this last week. Uh, thank goodness for George and his crew. It's just some of that old southern ingenuity. They, they got it to work, guys. Let me tell you. We're opening it up, so. Uh. Always interesting and, and I probably didn't send. I, I know I didn't send. Our utility billing is out. Uh, it, it's mind boggling how many utility bills we sent out. Four thousand four hundred and seventy two. Uh, we had some rereads to do. Uh, that was just two hundred and seventeen. Uh. We missed a couple of garbage cans. Believe it or not, we do make mistakes. But we just missed two. It's not bad. It's not bad. Uh, limbs and pickup, uh, we've done. But the total amount billed for this last billing was one point three million dollars. So. Uh, we pumped a hundred and forty two million gallons on that, so. Court, uh, we had sixty four citations issued. And this was just in April. Uh, a balance due out of all of those of fifteen thousand six hundred dollars. Uh, there's been some past due letters that people have not stamped current on their. So we're sending those letters out. We still have contract with a collecting agency. Uh, I think I've shared that with you. It's about four hundred thousand dollars worth of uncollectibles. And they're making headway. Uh, there's monthly deposits, so. So when, yeah, it's, it's surprising. And it doesn't cost us nothing. Well, it does, but they take their percentage out of what they collect. So, which is a good deal. Uh, knock on wood. No tort claim profiled and, and the cemetery had just two openings last year. Or last month, excuse me. Uh, police report. We've, uh. It's really kind of a quiet month for them. Uh, just three hundred and twenty six traffic stops. There were assaults, twenty four alarms, which. Yeah, your bank alarms and home security alarms and stuff like that was twenty three. Uh, EMS assist is thirty six. Uh, has some, oh, our public service includes, you know, civil matters, traffic control. Helping motorists and parking complaints was a hundred and thirty nine. And this is a good thing. Vandalism is going down. And that number is twenty four. I've seen it since I've been here for the last five months. I've seen a month where it was like seventy plus. So. That's good news, so. And I think.
Why you think that is?
I don't know. Well, I, you know, we.
It's the scooters. They have scooters to ride. They have scooters to ride now.
I picked up a scooter this morning.
They can't afford paying.
I doubt who the lady was coming in behind me right over here at the garage. Somebody had laid one down in the middle of the alley. So I stopped, got out, picked up the scooter. And this lady, I guess, did not see me get out of the car. And, but I saved the scooter.
Good job.
I kid you not. I don't know. Oh, there's nobody. Was it Jude I am? About. But anyway, uh, there's, there's. I think summertime is here. There's more things to do. Soccer field, my gosh. I, I think half of the kids in Gaiman go out there and play soccer all the time. That's a win win. That's a win win. Let me just touch on that just a little bit. We had an internal staff meeting. Last Tuesday. Uh, and we're looking at phase two. We need more soccer fields. That, that's a fact. I mean, we need more soccer fields, so. The plans are being looked at. We have. I know the company. Uh, what's the architects or the, the civil engineers? Horn.
Kevin Mark.
That's it. We have a personal meeting with them next week. I want to invite Councilman Geraldine. And I'll let you know when that is. So meeting with staff to kind of get. Things on paper and have a plan going forward. Right now it's just scattered, so. It looks great. We're still looking at water well. We got well number twenty eight still down. Uh, Tracy's doing everything he can to. What happened? The pump itself disintegrated, knocked hole in the casing. Of course, there's damage in, in the bottom of the casing. And there are companies that will come down and repair that underground. And I think we're about thirtieth in the queue. So hopefully in the next three weeks we get that done. We'll have a hundred percent pumping capacity. But still keep in mind, though, we can just pump seven million gallons a day. That's our max. We bumped up against five point two this weekend. And we are continually look for water and water plants, so. That's what we do. Yeah, and I was asked by David Black. He's gone. Can y'all please talk into the mic? Because Martin have a hard time to hear it.
David Black, I guess he runs the sound at church. And he says, if you all will just talk into those mics, they will work.
We couldn't hear.
You what? Do you need this mic? I can't hear you. No, I'm, I understand.
All right.
Yeah. We're good.
Anybody? I've got a little bit. One thing, and we talked about it and intended to do it during the regular session. But I, I'm sure you all got the announcement from Mike about the million dollar EDA grant. Uh, we. The EDA deal got kind of kicked off when we, when we got the grant for the partnership with the school and the college. For the VOTAC building, exposing it to the welding. This would never. Because price has gone up. So there was a, I think, a relationship developed with EDA to help us. That'll help with this. With the rebuilding of our two. Three. And help with our, getting our wastewater plant headed the way we want to go. We've had lots of, we've been having lots of visits about. Working on a sustainable source of water for the community. And I think we're about ready to. I think Mike and I are ready to maybe roll out some ideas to everybody. And let you know, we've had some, we've been having some small intimate visits with some folks around the state. And I think you'll, I think you're going to like what you hear. I hope you do. Anyway, that's a very, very good start on getting a wastewater plant up to where it needs to be. Because it's got some, of course, some problems. Uh, in addition to that, last, it's been two weeks ago. Due to my involvement with OML as the state president. I got to attend the southwestern municipal conference. What that is, is that is like. West Virginia down to Florida, across to Texas and Oklahoma, fourteen states. It was a very small. COVID was part of it. People were getting back in the habit. There were probably somewhere in the neighborhood of forty people in attendance. There were municipal league directors from each state, president of the municipal leagues and some mayors and smoke attendants. Just a lot. It was a wide variety of people, but we got to have a lot of very. Good one on one conversations. And trust me, when, when we left. Well. When we left, they knew we got enough. And we had great. It was one of the best conferences I've ever been to. I've got this on. It's the worst one I've had. Maybe we need to get this. Anyway, it was a good meeting. And I, I appreciate the fact that I got to go represent OML. They fitted the bills, so I, so we had a good time. And it was in Hot Springs, which if you've never been to Hot Springs, you need to go. Uh, one of the most, and I, and I thought this so many times when we were in Hot Springs. Hot Springs has, over the years, they have quite a collection of what they call public art. That people have donated to the city, have paid for. Uh, I asked about it. I said, you know, what's the city done? They said, we just started the program and people jumped on board. So we don't have any money. We have very little money. But just almost every place you went, there was public art. But it is tourist. And we had a great time. Lot of things that I know. I've had a visit this morning from the Capitol, from our OML director. The legislative session's starting to wind down. They still haven't started really talking about the budget yet. Of course, Oklahoma's got a lot of cash in the, in the bank right now. So they're, they're figuring all ways to. A lot of good ways to spend it, some of them not so good. But anyway, one of the biggest things that, that in this conference, one of the very biggest things that was a topic of conversation. It's been our topic at OML and, and downstate is. Am I not talking? Does something not work? Anyway. Uh, we. Is called preempt. We're getting hit with so many things from the legislature that they want to take away our ability to self, to self rule. Uh, one of the things, and this came from, it comes from the think tank. But they've been talking about food truck. Law. And basically what they wanted to do to start with was tell us what we could do with food trucks. But they, but we couldn't tell. We couldn't restrict due to zoning. They could set up everywhere they wanted. I was in a meeting and our executive director was one of the legislators. And he was going, I said, what's wrong with having somebody, you know, working out, running a kitchen out of their house? A restaurant out of their house? And Mike finally told him, he said, well, I guess I don't have any problem. But he said, if you do that, what are you going to do when the guy wants to put the welding shop in next door to? With a boiler maker? So for us to continue to, to make our cities and towns the very best they are, we've got to keep fighting. And it's been, it's been a very good, very good year. I've enjoyed it. And like I said, I, anytime I go, I, I try to represent Gaiman as well as I can. And that's about all I've got. I know I'm forgetting something. Anyway. Anybody else? Anything to pop to mind? Yep. Okay. I want to thank everybody for tonight and thanks for your attendance. Let's see, what else? Public comments and announcements. Public comments and announcements. We have no new business, so we'll stay in the journal.
Thank you.
Thank you.